Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on August 17. We do have one council member who is attending remotely. And for the rest of us here, I hope we're staying cool during this heat wave we're experiencing. With that, if you're able, can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's Councilmember Greenstein, who is attending remotely. With that, we do have an agenda and consent agenda items before us. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have an agenda, approved consent agenda and consent agenda. On our approved agenda is public, is public comment. We didn't have anyone sign up virtually, but we do have a couple of people who've here wishing to address this council. First is Todd Monahan. If you can please come up right here. Just give us your name, what city you live in, and please keep your comments about three minutes. We'll have, hopefully, we'll have a timer right here behind you.
All right, start beeping at me when I'm gone too long. Todd Monahan, I'm here tonight with Olympic Rentals and myself. I don't live in the city limits, but own property here in the city and also manage. I guess we manage about 177 homes as of this morning in, in the city limits and about 200 more right around city limits in probably growth, growth areas that you're going to absorb pretty soon. And I was here to talk briefly about, I think you got something on your item tonight about dispute resolution and mediation for landlords and tenants. And I just wanted to say, I wasn't quite sure what, what problem you were trying to solve with that. But I understand it might be $50,000 worth of investment here in the community for that. And I want to encourage you to invest it in another way. I'd still like it to see it go to, to housing and landlords and tenants. But the reason I want to encourage you to do that is because mediation's available in almost every case right now, often through the same contractor that you're talking about contracting with, and always before you go to court. Tenants also have free access if, if they qualify and if they ask for it, for an attorney. State law provides that. So they already have, tenants have that, landlords don't. But I want to maybe propose some other alternatives to that. So I, I think you would be duplicating services with money that's, as you know, scarce oftentimes here in our local government area. It's, it's already there for people to take advantage of, the mediation. And I would just want to reaffirm that, that landlords or housing providers, they don't want to evict people and they want to work with people. And oftentimes, you only get to court or mediation when everything has gone wrong. And thus, I sent an email earlier, I'd like you to look at number 10 especially. Those are some alternatives. I want you to work with the housing providers, tenant, tenant union, whoever. Sit us at the same table and let's see if we can come up with some creative solutions. One that, that I propose there would be some type of navigator. When you get to the point where you want to break up with somebody, you need some help. We're professionals, we work in it every day, and we cannot navigate the social service network to get people the help they need to be able to stay in housing. Would be glad to share examples of that or stories about situations where we have worked our tails off to try to get people the help they need, and we haven't been able to. Eviction is a last resort. I've been through eight of them in 35 years. Four of them, people, people hired us to help with, and the other four were people that were drug addicted, arrested, you know, out of the home, really, really had some tough times. If we can't navigate it, how can people who are in those situations navigate it for themselves? So I was proposing here, if you've got 50,000 to spend, put it into your housing, maybe Jennifer Adams or somebody that, that you have on board. Help navigate for all parties concerned. So I'd encourage you to look at some creative ways of spending that money that might be more effective and not duplicate services.
Great, thank you, Todd.
Yep.
The other person who signed up is Spencer Zeeman. You know the drill, introduce yourself.
Spencer Zeeman, I've been a Lacey resident for about nine years consecutively now. Good evening, council and public. I just have a question tonight. I've been doing a lot of research and about 15 months ago, I think most of the people here are familiar with a situation that arose with conditional land use permits. And to my knowledge, there were a series of recommendations that were made during that process to try and simplify and remove the confusion that was going on at that time. While digging through the documents in the city, I haven't been able to see if that, those recommendations were implemented or not. I will continue to look into that. But my ask tonight is that, as a council, as the staff, could we address that and button those language up to make sure that we don't have a situation like that where we have a lot of public support in one way or another, and the public feels alienated? So that is my request tonight, that we do this in some sort of open forum, whether that be a public meeting later on, a work session, whatever feels appropriate to the council. I would just like to make sure that we do have resolution on this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Spencer. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Please introduce yourself, tell me what city you're from, and keep your comments three minutes.
Good, good evening, council. My name's Terry Ballard. I have two houses in unincorporated Thurston County called Tango Wild and one in Olympia. I'm here to talk about an injustice that was made, okay, on me. I want equal treatment by the city. I want equal treatment. I don't want discrimination. I'm running for Thurston County Commissioner District Number Five. My signs have been, my signs have been destroyed, my signs have been covered up. My signs have been everything you can ever imagine thrown, everything you can ever imagine, even covered up. Okay, even covered up. I want the same consideration as my counterpart who's running against me. Okay, I want the same consideration. I put this into you, I put this into the, into the police because it's a violation. It's a violation of law. And we need to correct that. We need to be on an equal plane here. Just because I live in unincorporated Thurston County doesn't mean I get treated less in Lacey. So I will, I will put you to the, put you to, I got a minute left. The first one's the RCW and what you can do as far as find these people, okay, $1,000 fine if you screw with somebody's sign. There's the examples in Lacey of the signs, okay? Also, I, I listed a, a false, a false report, okay? If your public officials give you a false report, that's a gross misdemeanor. It's more than a $1,000 fine, okay? And also, if they don't give you something that, that you know not to be true, or they know not to be true, that's a false report. That's a gross misdemeanor, not like, just like a step down misdemeanor of, of these signs. And again, I want equal treatment. In, in my 35 years of the military, I served as an equal opportunity representative in the United States Army. I know all about discrimination. I know all about racism, reverse racism, reverse discrimination. I know all about those, and I combated this for eight years as a senior non-commissioned officer in the United States Army for 22 years, serving on active duty. So please, let me know what you can find out about this. I put in a police report on this, and I want equal justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Hearing none, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is our public hearing. I'm going to open this public hearing on the vacation of unopened right of way and turn it over to Dave. Open the public meeting.
Thank you, council members, Mr. Mayor. So today's public hearing follows a process that the council has previously been briefed on. And it deals with a section of unopened right of way in the southern portion of the city. So this right of way was originally dedicated via plat in 1921 for future roadways. This was prior to the city annexing this property. This was in the unincorporated Thurston County. Portions of the right of way originally dedicated have already been vacated when the subdivisions of Indian Summer and the Lynx were put into place. And the development of the Lynx subdivision that you can see in the map has eliminated the need for any future roadway connections, thus rendering this section of roadway not usable. The city has no maintenance responsibilities for it. This right of way serves no public purpose. The city hasn't paid for this right of way. Again, it was dedicated via plat. And so the RCWs do allow or sometimes require, if the roadway is vacated, that the property owners reimburse the city. That's not being requested here. In this case, property owners were notified of the city's looking into this issue back in December of '22. And we've had significant communication and notification given to the property owners about this process. And there has been a lot of involvement between the property owners adjacent to the right of way and city staff, notably Aubrey Collier, the city's engineer. So in July of this year, the city council passed Resolution 1135, which set the date for this public hearing. The notice for this public hearing was published, it was posted on site. Letters were mailed to the, to the property owners of this hearing. So what council, during the public hearing, council should take comment from any members of the public that would wish to comment on this issue. And there has been some correspondence submitted to the city by way of written testimony. It didn't speak directly to council's action, but more was inquisitive in nature. And I think council has a copy of this in their packet about maybe impacts or effects of, of certain trees and whatnot. And the city staff did respond to those written, written inquiries already. The city engineer Aubrey is online and available for any questions. She's on Zoom. So with that, that would end the city's portion of the public hearing. So I, I would suggest that the mayor ask if there's any public that would wish to comment at this time.
We, we did have one person who at least signed up about interest in the vacation of unopened rye of way. Janice Kilgore, Janice, do you wish to address this council? If you do so, you need to come to the... Just pretend, just pretend like you're talking straight to me. You just come up here and introduce yourself. Go ahead, come up real quick. Just, just quickly introduce yourself and...
Janice Kilgore, and we're the ones that have our driveway where the old easement was, where the easement has been vacated. And, you know, it's been our driveway forever. And the adjacent owner in one particular house there in Indian Summers has said that there's a tree that's there, and he wants to cut it down. He's had the city come out and cut down other trees that have been on that easement over time. So anyway, we didn't want that tree cut down. It's actually in his half of that easement. So I guess that's, you know, I don't know that there's... I remember Lacey had this thing going for a long time, that you had to plant so many trees in every yard and such like that. And, you know, I was just thinking that, why are we... And, you know, I was just thinking that why are we planting them if somebody can just come along, cut them down when they want to, you know? So I...
Do you have anything particular for about this right-of-way? About obviously going back, because you, it looks like you will be one of the recipients of it.
Yeah, because we're, we've lived there for forty years, so. That, at the time, was, it went all the way back into where the golf course is now. And so, I mean, it, it was just a right-of-way for the fields that were in there before that. And so, yeah, so anyway.
Is council member allowed to ask questions?
Sure.
Ma'am, did you say that your driveway for ingress and egress is on this easement subject property? And how will that affect with this, with RCW? How is that going to affect her driveway?
Half of the driveway belongs to the neighbors on Indian Summers side. And half, not half, actually, it's, there's, what is there, forty feet? I think there's forty feet.
It's forty feet wide, but it'll, it'll cut across, it'll cut across, probably the biggest part is out by the road. It'll cut across probably a big four foot of our driveway.
It's still a valid easement. Do you can still utilize it?
Yeah.
It won't be obstructed with this?
Well, if, the problem is, a neighbor wants to come in there and cut trees down from Indian Summers. He's, he's had the city come out and cut other trees down out there. And so he doesn't want us using our part. He's, you know, he wants to do what he wants to do. And we just want to maintain our driveway somehow in here. And none of the other people on that side want to cut any of the trees that have been planted there, you know, down. It's just him. He's always trying to cut trees down, so.
Okay.
Any more questions? That's all I got to say.
Sounds like for most, that's going to be a question for after this whole process is over.
Well, the tree will be gone by then, so this will be the second tree. And the other one was a huge old one that's, there's equal ones in the, in the park over there in Indian Summers Chambers Prairie area. And they've been there for the same amount of years as the other tree was. But he was able to get City of Lacey to come down and come and cut that down just for, well, we never did know why. But, and then now this same thing's happening with this one. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on this issue? Seeing none, with that, I am going to close this public hearing on the vacation of this unopened right-of-way. Turn it back over to the city, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council will note that ordinances are typically handled a little bit further down in the agenda, but for this particular agenda, we did add the ordinance consideration at this time. So to briefly restate, the, the public hearing now has been held. The decision as to whether or not to vacate this section of right-of-way is squarely in the council's discretion. City staff is recommending that the council adopt ordinance number sixteen forty-one, which would vacate this open right-of-way and return this unused property to the adjacent property owners. Passage of the ordinance and associated exhibits, which describe the property and show the property in map form, would be effective in five days, as with all ordinances. The, the city manager would execute deeds just for title purposes, just to show ownership of those described right-of-ways in the adjacent property owners. But without, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But we are, city is, city staff is recommending that council adopt ordinance number one-six-four-one.
Well, for ease's sake, I say I move that we pass ordinance sixteen forty-one, the vacation of the unopened right-of-way. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I know I asked this question before, but the, the people on, who will be receiving, you know, the recipients of this and, and these people here, they won't absorb any cost associated with, with this action, either whether it's title updating or, or those types of things. Is that still true?
No, none of the costs associated with the vacation or with, you know, the deeds, none of that would be passed down to any of the property owners. So I mean, I'd look to the assessor for determination of whether or not their real estate taxes might be. But they'll, they'd be receiving property, so the square footage would be increased.
It's already been done.
It's already been done.
Correct. The, our city survey, our city surveyor has legally described all of the properties, including down the center line, so. Correct.
Is there any other discussion? This is true, we are giving property back and so these two property owners are going to be receiving more property, so, yeah. Is there any other discussion? There's been a motion, a second, to approve ordinance sixteen forty-one, the vacation of unopened right-of-way, all in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
And with that, we're going to go on to our next agenda item, which is under proclamations, an overdose awareness day. We'll get started.
Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day shares the message that overdose deaths occur in all communities and among people from every walk of life, and?
Whereas the City of Lacey stands beside and uplifts those who have lost loved ones to an overdose and those who have a substance use disorder and are diligently working hard, working toward recovery, and?
Whereas overdose deaths are preventable and can be caused by alcohol, over-the-counter medications, stimulants, opioids, and other substances, and?
Whereas, like many communities across Washington State, the national opioid epidemic and other overdoses pose a significant threat to public health and safety in Lacey. And people who experience an overdose are deserving of quality care and kindness, and?
Whereas the City of Lacey has joined with other Washington communities in the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding to access funds vital to responding to the opioid epidemic in our community, and?
Whereas Washington State has implemented a state opioid response plan, and?
Whereas anyone can visit the statewide resource, www.stopoverdose.org and recovery helpline at one-eight-six-six-seven-eight-nine-fifteen-eleven for twenty-four hour information and help. And now therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three as overdose awareness day in the City of Lacey and encourage anyone whose life has been impacted by substance use disorder to call the Washington Recovery Helpline at one-eight-six-six-seven-eight-nine-fifteen-eleven. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on August seventh, seventeen, twenty-twenty-three. And with this, we have, hopefully Katie to accept this.
Proclamation, thank you very much.
Cool. Thank you so much, City of Lacey, for doing this. It's really great that this is multiple years in a row now that City of Lacey has done an International Overdose Awareness Day proclamation. And it's fantastic for Lacey to join our other jurisdictions, including the City of Tumwater, City of Olympia, and Thurston County Commissioners in doing this each year. It really goes to memorialize the folks that we have lost, unfortunately, from the opioid epidemic. I think that, you know, many of us, if not all of us in this room, have been touched by the opioid epidemic in some way, either by losing a friend, a family member, or just witnessing it and experience, experiencing the loss in our community as well. We do have a thriving Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force that's housed in public health as well as the prosecutor's office at Thurston County. We have multiple efforts that are going on within that as well for overdose treatment, initial prevention, pregnant and parenting populations. And it's really got some great boots-on-the-ground work that we're moving forward. We have tangible strategies and I invite everyone to participate in our task force if you're interested in moving forward the work. We also, in honor of International Overdose Awareness Day, have an overdose awareness day event on August thirty-first. It'll be happening at Heritage Park downtown Olympia, the big grassy area where Lake Fair is. The event is from one to seven and from one o'clock to five o'clock, we'll be having a resource fair with different providers in our community, different treatment providers, social service agencies, all kinds of folks who have different resources. And then from five to seven, we'll be focusing more on the memorial activities with memorial art, candles, music, and that type of thing. I also urge everyone in honor of overdose awareness day to carry naloxone and to learn how to respond to an opioid-related overdose. In Washington State, we have a standing order, which allows everyone to carry naloxone, which reverses an opioid-related overdose regardless of your age. It's all legal to carry. And also, I wanted to pitch that we have partnered, we being public health, have partnered with the Thurston County Chamber of Commerce to do a naloxone and opioid response training at the Virgil Clarkson Senior Center in Lacey on September seventh at twelve-thirty. Everyone is welcome to attend. It is targeted towards business owners and business staff for Lacey, but anyone is welcome to attend to learn a life-saving skill. So thank you again.
Thank you, Katie. So next up on our agenda, agenda is a referral from our planning commission. Ryan?
Good evening, council. I'm over here tonight. Thanks for having me. So tonight, we have the annual twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments. As a reminder, these were added to our annual comprehensive plan amendment docket back with our joint Planning Commission, City Council meeting back in February. These amendments have been reviewed by the Planning Commission and have been recommended for approval. Now, an ordinance is in front of you, ordinance sixteen forty-two. The recommendation is for adoption of that ordinance here tonight. So the first request is a private applicant-initiated request from the Gwinwood Retreat Center related to a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoned for six-zero-one-five Thirtieth Avenue Southeast. That's located off the shores of Hicks Lake, down the southwest corner of Hicks Lake. The application seeks to change the designation of approximately seven-point-five acres of high-density residential zoned property to open space institutional on the comprehensive land use and zoning map. Purpose of the request is to consider redesignating the property to open space institutional to provide consistency with the property owner's plans for the current future uses on the property. The existing high-density residential zone requires residential uses at a density of twelve units per acre or greater. This means that any future development of the property will be required to be developed for multifamily units in order to meet the density requirements of that underlying zone. The property is owned by a group of churches who wish to continue to utilize the property as a retreat center for the foreseeable future. The high-density zoning district does allow this essentially grandfathered use to continue. However, any future development or redevelopment of the property would have to adhere to the requirements of the high-density zone. So redesignation to open space institutional would be more appropriate for the current future use of the property. So on the map there, you can see the area rezoned, which is highlighted by an arrow, the seven-point-five acres out of the total twenty-eight acres of the Gwinwood property. To the north of that are a couple of multifamily properties that were recently approved for permits for, for multifamily development there. Let me go to the next slide. This is the aerial photograph of the property. As you can see, most of it is covered in dug fir trees with some open spaces and some small outbuildings. There is a wetland that connects to the south between Hicks Lake and, and some of our other regional lakes. And this, the benefit of this rezon also would be that it's consistent with the environmental protections in the area and going to that open space institutional is consistent with that. The one thing I did want to mention too is that kind of on the right-hand side of the property, on the east side of the property, you can see the lodge building there. And I think the council is probably aware that back on the Fourth of July, the lodge building caught fire and is now essentially needing to be rebuilt. The, the good news, I guess if there is good news about this, is that the rezon process actually kind of enables them to get a little bit more development capacity out of their property. Being zoned open space institutional would allow that to be reconstructed with now any worry of grandfathered uses elapsing or those kinds of things. So there is some benefit in, in having this rezon approved tonight for those purposes. So Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the amendment back on May sixteenth. Written and oral testimony was received at the hearing and all of it was supportive of the application. The written portion of the, the comments are in your packet here tonight. After the, the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted unanimously at the meeting to advance the application to the city council with their recommendation of approval. And the next slide, John? Thanks. The second item, final item, is adoption of the Parks Culture and Recreation Comp Plan for twenty-twenty-three. This plan is updated every six years and is adopted into our overall city's comprehensive plan. This is the guiding document for the Parks Department as well as the Parks Board. Updating this plan provides an opportunity to evaluate Lacey's park system, recreation facilities and services, assess demands and needs, set goals and policies, maintains eligibility for grants, and also provides public input to address the needs. Let's just remind the council that you were briefed on this at a work session last week. So this is relatively fresh information. I did want to just mention a couple of real high points on some of the updates and revisions to the plan. So it updates things like our strategic goals, our open space and facilities inventory, our level of service information, and includes things like demographic updates and other items like that. Policy-wise, it does address some and update some policies. Primarily, this is very similar to our last plan updates in that it, we're making sure that we're keeping up with growth, move from a predominantly property acquisition era within the Parks Department to a greater emphasis on parks improvements and development phase. And most importantly, I think, solidifying a sustainable future funding strategy. This comprehensive plan update also provides valuable information on the goals and objectives to address these challenges. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the Parks Culture and Recreation Comp Plan back on July eighteenth. No public testimony was received and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment to the city council after the close of the hearing. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission is recommending that the ordinance be approved tonight, adopting the twenty-twenty-three annual comprehensive plan amendments. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
And for experience's sake, we're going to go right into our ordinance, this ordinance, ordinance sixteen forty-two, the twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plans amendments. And again, for ease, I, I will move that we adopt ordinance number sixteen forty-two, which is adopting the twenty-twenty-three City of Lacey Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Is there? And there's a second discussion. I actually had one question real quick. So just because I want to back up to the part where you said that, you know, as a grandfathered in, well, I guess right now it's, it's high-density. It can be high-density or is a high-density. And if we, if we go this route and we, and we make this, you know, open space institutional, if, are you saying that if, if title changes hands, that it will no longer? Can you help me clarify that so that I get a fuller understanding?
Yeah, so it has nothing to do with property sales. That doesn't factor into zoning or comprehensive planning. That basically runs with the property. So the, the point that I was trying to make was, under the current allowed uses within that high-density residential zone with the lodge building, they have essentially eighteen months to rebuild in its exact configuration. After eighteen months, they may take the risk that that would be, that would lapse. Under the open space institutional zone, that eighteen month doesn't really apply anymore because that use is already a permitted use versus previously, it was not a permitted use in the high-density zone.
So it, it sounded like you said that if, if there is a possibility that could revert back to high-density and I was, I guess I was just wondering what, what that condition would be. That's not what you were saying?
That's not what I was saying.
All right, cool. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilman?
So I live on Hicks Lake. Would that be a conflict of interest?
No, not at all. I'll just make one comment. First of all, I just wanted to thank Gwinwood for coming with this recommendation. There's a long history. I've been to this camp. My daughter's been to this camp. My daughter's been a counselor at this camp. And this is the appropriate response from our community when it comes to an issue. We had a public comment earlier about conditional use and, you know, what goes on around that. Whenever our community feels like the underlying zoning isn't meeting the, the current zoning of today, that's not compatible, this is what you do, right? Ideally, this is what you do. You don't wait till we're, we're building high-density on this area where we know that... You don't wait till we're building high-density on this area where we know that is not, the public did not want more high-density in this area. So, what you do, you come to the city of Lacey, say, hey, I don't think this is compatible any longer. Can we do a comprehensive plan update? We take a look at it, we give it to our planning commission, they go, you're right, this doesn't, it's not compatible any longer. This is, makes more sense to do this. Here we are, and we're on the verge. Hopefully, I will be supporting this ordinance. So, for the public, if you don't feel like you're in an area where the underlying zoning is no longer compatible, say something because we don't know, right? I mean, this, this underlying, or this underlining zoning has been there for a very long time. And for a very long time, we haven't heard anything. So, maybe this is what the community wants. But, you know, times change, things change, you know, we try to keep up on, on, on our underlying zoning, but every once in a while, you know, we realize there is a conflict. And so, I'm really happy this went through the right process, that we weren't after the fact trying to figure out what do we do when now someone's already, you know, doing something else with the property. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Gwinwood. Thank you for going through this, this process, and we really, we really appreciate going through the normal course of business here in the city of Lacey. So, with that, is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1642, adopting the 2023 C of Lacey Comprehensive Plan Amendments. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you very much. And with that, next up on our agenda is straight to the city manager's report because we just took care of the two ordinances. Acting City Manager, Troy?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. There are three items under tonight's city manager's report. The first is the dispute resolution center contract, and we'll invite Jennifer Adams, our new housing coordinator, up to speak to that issue.
Good evening, council members, mayors, members of the public. It's nice to be back here.
Jennifer, do you have the remote, the clicker?
I do not.
Dave?
Sure. Thank you. I suppose that's helpful.
Nice call, Ryan.
So, I haven't practiced this, so if I look a little weird, I'm sorry about that. I'll get better. So, I'm pleased to be back again to speak about a potential contract with the Thurston County Dispute Resolution Centers, an agency that provides conciliation and mediation services for both tenants and landlords, and seeks to empower people to resolve their conflicts while focusing on equity, collaboration, and respectful engagement. At the council work session that was held on July the 27th, a presentation was given that covered the dispute resolution center's scope of work, the July 31 sunset of the state mandated pilot program, the option for the city to fund and continue providing access to DRC services in our local communities, and the charge from state legislation and the city of Lacey's housing action plan to provide access to mediation services for landlords and tenants. Additionally, we look to neighboring jurisdiction Tom Water, who has initiated a contract with the DRC and is reporting a consistent use of services to this point. Staff requested at that time that city council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the DRC to continue providing access to services. There we go. Magic button always works. So, to quickly recap the request for funding, $50,000 is recommended to initially fund a Lacey-based eviction resolution program. Service would commence upon formal approval by council and a ratified contract with the DRC. Funds would be reevaluated in year 2024 based on an assessment of services used and anticipated service needs. The $50,000 is expected, for example, to serve 32 conciliation cases and 32 mediation I apologize. Okay. So, to review the cost breakdown, which includes fixed costs, conciliation and mediation services, the fixed costs include $1,250 per month for DRC services and $1,000 per renter certification session, which would be a maximum of two sessions per contract year. Conciliation services, those that do not require mediation, are billed at a rate of $175 per party per session. And then mediation services, those that would include the presence of all parties with a dedicated two-hour session, are billed at a rate of $315 per party per session. So, during the July work session, council requested further information, including discussions with local property management groups to gain perspective on the successes and perhaps also the challenges of DRC services, as seen from both the landlord and the tenant perspective regarding the efficacy of DRC services. Council also requested clarification regarding the indirect monthly fixed cost of $1,250. So, in the past few weeks, I've had a tremendous opportunity to engage with several of our large property groups in our region. Those included MVP Realty, Olympic Rentals, who believe Todd was here this evening. That was good to see. Hometown Property Management, The Reserve at Lacey, Surrey Lane Apartments, Tuscana Apartments, and The Dakota Apartments, all whom have had experience with DRC services. Methods of engagement included in-person roundtable discussions, phone conversations, and email correspondence. Overall, the feedback from these property groups did express concern about the effectiveness and potential long-term consequences for landlords when dispute resolution, resolution services are utilized. However, I do want us to remember that due to the nature of this being a voluntary program, which would require both the landlord and the tenant to agree to using dispute resolution in lieu of court proceedings, the general consensus did reveal that funding this program would not result in any additional risk for landlords. This program is more tailored towards small landlords who may utilize the service more than these larger groups. An important aspect of this program will be to communicate its availability to those who might utilize the services. This would include possibly the use of social media and other means to drive potential clients to these resources. So, for clarification regarding the indirect costs charged at the 1,250 per month, these costs are expected to capture overhead, such as rent and caseload software, in addition to recouping the cost of preparing cases for mediation and for coordinating mediators. For example, if a case initially involves the time and services of the DRC, and then a tenant or a landlord chooses to pull out of participation, those monthly fixed costs help to recover the incurred staff time. So, we have some suggested options. Council has a few options that include authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the DRC for an amount of $50,000 for services that would take us through the end of this calendar year. Council could also consider an alternative funding amount at a later work session or choose not to authorize a contract between the DRC and the city of Lacey. At this time, staff believes that option one, to approve the contract for $50,000, is appropriate and is consistent with furthering our state and our local goals that encourage cities to provide landlord and tenant support and education. And thank you so much for your time available for any questions.
Any questions, or can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to enter into professional services agreement with the dispute resolution services of Thurston County for an amount not to exceed $50,000 through December 31st of 2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Lenny?
So, I guess I'm a little bit confused. I've spoken to a couple of the same people that you had spoken to, Todd for one, and then also Hometown. And from what they both tell me, in all cases of going to eviction, mediation is already part of the process. So, I'm not, I'm not sure what we're doing here. I'm not sure that this money is doing anything other than duplicating what's already being done.
So, Lenny, I can answer that question.
Please.
Yeah. This program was fully funded before by the state of Washington, up until June, and so.
That was during COVID. Even before COVID and even now.
And so.
It is still, when you go to court on eviction, the judge requires you to go to mediation.
Yeah, and then you have to pay for it. And so, what this is doing is allowing a no-cost mediation. So, there's still a cost involved in that. And so, what this is doing is we're covering, the city of Lacey is covering that cost. But, I think you bring up a good question, and I do want to speak more to this, to Todd. I do think there are other gaps out there besides mediation, and it's something that we need to continue to talk about. And I would love to have, have a more of a roundtable with Todd and Hometown and say, hey, mediation's one thing. It's always sort of the last resort, and now at least it's not costing the tenant. And, you know, it's pretty hard to go into mediation when you're trying to get, if there's an additional cost on it on top of rent, right? I mean, so, it's one thing about that, but then, then what other resources are out there and helps, can, can the city help? So, I think there's two different things here. You know, one thing, you're enforcing mediation, then you have to pay for it, is that's, that's a hardship on its own. Go ahead, go ahead, Lenny.
Yeah, so, what I've, what I've been told in talking to people about this is that if anyone who can't afford it, it is, there is no hardship, that it is covered. There is, there is already a program for taking care of this. So, I'm, I'm just not sure that we're funding something that needs funding. I like to spend the money to solve problems. I'm just not sure that there's a problem being solved here because I believe, from what I'm hearing, it's already been solved. They can get, people, tenants can already get free legal help and free mediation if they can't afford the mediation. So, I'm just, I'm not sure what we're solving, and I think there might be better uses for this money to actually solve a problem that exists.
I thought that money dried up.
Well, that was just, that was, you're talking about the COVID thing. But my understanding is that anyone who doesn't have the means to pay for it, it is still available, that they can still get free mediation and, and actually legal advice, legal counseling on this as well.
Can we get some confirmation on that?
I can.
Yeah, please.
Speak to it a little bit. This is, what was funded through the COVID was interim mediation before a lawsuit gets filed, eviction lawsuit. So, once it gets to that point, it, those services are still available. This, what the state was trying to get people out of the court system and the eviction system by offering, you know, the conciliation and the mediation services before the lawsuit was filed. So, that's, that's the gap that is now going away. So, every successful mediation, this level saves, resources, city resources in the court system.
Wouldn't there be a way to do this, then, where we pay for it when it's necessary, when it, when it comes up, rather than putting dispute resolution on retainer for this? I just think we're spending money unnecessarily. I mean, if there's a hardship, I'm all for helping resolve the tenant landlord dispute, whether it be a management company, individual landlord, whatever it is. I just don't think this is the best use of the money for solving that problem.
Well, I guess the question is, is when, when do you want to intervene? Do you want to intervene ahead of time, which what we're talking about now, before it goes to the lawsuit?
Sure.
And then, or, right, which, which is what this would do? Or do you want?
And I'm all for intervening early, when people need it, and I think they should, if they need funding for that, I'm all for setting aside money for that. I just don't think a contract with dispute resolution is necessary for this, for the service.
Yeah, let's go, go ahead, and then we'll go down.
So, maybe the value is in, you know, saving time because time is money, too, right? So, what's the average start to finish? If you exhausted every avenue through dispute, you know, from start to mediation to actual, you know, resolution, what, what's the average time that, I mean, because maybe that's quicker than going through the court system and having someone get an eviction on their, you know, I mean, because if you got an eviction following you around, good luck trying to rent a place ever again. And then, maybe it takes twice as long as compared to these services, and maybe that's where the benefit is. I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Certainly. You raise a great question. Thank you. It may be one I don't have a solid answer for at this time. Part of that depends on who you talk to and which side of the issue they fall on. Dispute resolution centers do claim in all of their literature that you can find online that their process does indeed shorten the timeframe. And as you say, time is money, certainly. So, that would be something in favor of going that route. Those who are maybe looking more at the protection for landlords, you know, have some varying opinions there on whether or not this, this does prolong or save time in the process. I'm happy to get back with you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, one interesting point that Todd brought up was that they don't typically understand how to navigate through services. Now, they want to use evictions as a last resort. They would rather keep the tenant in there, help them find a resolution to whatever the issue is, but navigating through services and helps is, is a crutch for the private sector. A lot of folks in the private sector, it's just not, not an easy thing for them to do and to occupy their time. So, I think there's more discussion on this subject, more that we could look at, more that we could do to actually be of benefit to the community when it comes to this particular issue. I'm going to suggest that we table this and gather more information before we just throw 50 grand at, at this program and hope for the best because there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Have a comment.
Go ahead, Deputy.
So, I, I like the fact that this aims at people who own maybe less than 100 to 1,000 properties because for, for those people who, maybe they only have, you know, two or three rentals, and maybe they don't have the resources, and they could access something like this without, you know, making a court case out of it. And so, my question to you is, if we do put $50,000 on retainer with this institution, is it kind of like, as your slide shows, it's kind of like an as, is it, is it à la carte? Is it as you use it? And then, at the end of the year, if we only use 15,000, there's still 35 there?
That is correct, yes.
Except for the tall 50, right? A month?
That is also correct.
Yeah. So, so our, our, our real outlay is what, just, just short of 15? Or is it exactly 15?
Pretty close.
Okay, so, we're really committing to 15 by the end of the year, plus any costs that come.
Well, and part of that funding that is consistent every month, whether or not it's used, also provides training, right? It provides that fair renter training that is a benefit to tenants and landlords alike.
So, the, the training, as I understand it, would be the, the $1,000 per session at, up to two sessions per calendar year. And yes, those are for renter certification trainings.
So, a possible $16,000 if nobody uses it, and then in addition to whatever the usage cost is, as we have this $50,000 on retainer with them.
That is correct.
Counselor?
The thing I like about this is that it puts the infrastructure in place so we don't have to go and try to create something to solve a situation. And I think we, too, need to realize that the whole reason we're doing this is to try to help people from falling into homelessness. I mean, that's, we are trying to create this safety net, and this seems like a very small price to pay for that.
So, I think this is something we should do, but I think there's other things that we need to look at as well. You know, what, what, what this is doing is saying, before it gets to a court case, before you get into the court system, where you write the- then now you can do some of this stuff, let's see if we can, let's see if we can get to dispute resolutions before it ever goes that far. And I, that's, I think that's important. And especially if there's no cost, I don't, I think it's sort of a benefit to, more likely than the mom and pop and a renter saying, hey, can we talk this through before we get into the court system? Because once you're in the court system, then, you know, there's no really good outcome, once you get into the court system. So I do think we should support this. But I think there are other bigger issues, there's other issues out there, like navigation and everything else that we need to look at as well, that may be some of the bigger rental agencies are talking about. And so I think what we need to do is do both. I need, I think we need to continue to look and see, I think we should provide this service. Because if we don't provide it, then you're pushing more people into the courts, and I don't think that's good. And but then, let's, let's reach out to some of the, these management companies and see, okay, where, where else are we missing? And see if we can come back with another recommendation to, to help them out as well. Lenny?
I just think that we really have a lot of unanswered questions. I really think that we need further conversation. We need to really figure out what those other things are. Because I agree with you, Mayor, that we need to look at other things that we may be able to do to help. But I think we need to do it as a package. And I don't think doing this is kind of putting the cart before the horse. I think we really need to get to figure out what those things are, and then figure out how much money it's going to take to do this the right way, instead of band-aiding something, which truthfully, I think we're putting a Band-Aid on something that, that doesn't have a con. You know, I just don't think that what we're doing is actually fixing anything.
What's, what's difficult is time is, we're talking about time here. Hey, this is between now and the end of the year. So the longer we put this off, it means these resources aren't available for dispute resolution right now. And that's, that's my worry. Go ahead, council member, and we need to get to a vote.
This sounds almost like a quasi, or somewhat of an offshoot of a diversionary court. You know, so it's great you're avoiding court and stuff, but like, say Veterans Court for, for instance, or DUI diversion, right? It's, you volunteer to do it, right? But you can't pull out halfway. That's the part that's got me with this, is like, you need both sides, the landlord and the tenant, to agree to it, and that's awesome. But anyone can pull out at any time? It's, you know, and then what? You start, then you start the court process? Then you just added a couple of months onto it? I want to see some commitment here. It's like, if you're going to both volunteer, volunteer for, you know, through good or bad, whichever side, not, you know, just pull out halfway.
I don't know if legally we can do that, can we?
The city certainly can't dictate any waiving of any legal rights, no.
I guess, that's the only part that's bad with me. It's, I could see if, if you're both committed from the start and you go throughout to the finish, then yeah, it's a great thing. But it could be just something that could just add three or four months to the process.
Dispute resolution wholesale is typically a voluntary process. And that, the voluntary nature of that can always be revoked by the party.
And I mean, well, that's good too for both sides, I guess.
So when you presented this to us in the work session, I remember you had some slides that showed some numbers of how many people actually in the county, and I believe in the city, were using this service during the time that, that the state was funding it. Do you, do you, do you remember any of those numbers? And I'm not, you're not on the spot. If you don't, that's fine. If I remember right, it was somewhere around almost 400 people.
That is correct. It was 392 cases here inside of Lacey's boundaries during the pilot program.
Which is no longer being covered. Yep. Go ahead. Who's got your hand up? Yeah, Grant? Yeah, you have a hand up?
Yeah, just wanted to actually build on a couple of things. First, Ryan and I both heard the testimony tonight, and we are, have every intention to reach back out to the gentleman to, to look at that. It's not a, this, this is the only thing that we're going to have to do to solve, solve these issues. We will be coming back to you over the course of the next couple of years, I'm sure, with, with measures to, as we, as Jennifer gets settled in and sees what the needs are. We will be backing for you with our other programs to potentially help ease the housing situation. So it's not the end of the road. And unless my math is way off, Jennifer, tell me if I'm wrong, but the 1250 is, would be for four months. So the actual cost of doing it for the rest of the year?
My apologies, yes.
Yeah, 1250.
I was thinking of a year. My apologies.
Yep.
That's what, that's what I thought.
We're really committing to five grand to the year.
Because it's between now and the end of the year. That's why I'm like, I'm not a great guy at math, but that doesn't sound right.
Actually, it wasn't my math, but I agreed with somebody.
Well, we've had quite a bit of discussion. I do keep going back to, this is a use that we're, I mean, if people are taking advantage of this, then that's thing, that's cases we prevent from going to the courts. And that's a good thing. And so I think for, for what we're talking about, if we get down to the end of the year, and we've gone through a lot of this, means this is a service that's being used. And that's, that's good. Maybe not, the big boys don't use it as much, but if the, the mom and pops are using it more, you know, that's, that's, that's good for me.
Running this as a pilot seems ideal, because we don't quite know yet what the demand will look like. But this is going to give us the data to figure out if this is a worthwhile program or not.
And, you know, just as a, as a final, you know, we've, we've all been asked to do something about homelessness in this community. Every single one of us has received the emails. We've all talked to the people. They've stopped us and talked to us. I, I kind of see this as one of those measures that is, that potentially could keep a single mom and her kids off the street, or a, a small family, or even just a single person off the street. Those people that I've taken to lunch and said, why are you homeless? Well, I couldn't afford to live. I got evicted. You know, I've, I've, I've talked to those people. I've dealt with those people. I've sat and taken the lunch and everything like that. I got priced out. I couldn't afford it, you know? And there was really nobody, nobody to jump in the middle and say, hey, there, there is a way. We can, we can resolve this. And so I, I'm personally looking at this as another of our homelessness measures, personally. Because I would, you know, I, I, the, the court costs are, they don't weigh that heavy on my mind. What does weigh heavy on my mind is the people that I see in tents on the freeway.
Well, we've had a lot of discussion here. There's a motion and a second. Do you have?
I would say one last thing. It's, you know, we, we always talk of our staff too, and they're recommending this. So there's, there's that. And it's got a five-month trial.
With that, like I said, there, we have received a motion and a second. We had lots of discussion. All those in favor of the motion, can you please say aye, raise your hand?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Councilmember Greenstein? Well, then we have one nay. But the, the motion does carry.
Yeah, find out what his vote is.
I talked to him earlier, and he said he might have to leave early, so he might not be online. Can we tell if he's online?
It doesn't appear that he's currently online.
So that'll be an abstention. And the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Grant. Next, we will have the Regional Athletic Complex 20-Year Financial Plan. And we will start with Jen Burbidge, our Parks, Culture and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Troy. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to present the updated 20-year financial plan for the Regional Athletic Complex. The updated plan is for 2024 through 2043. And this evening, we're looking for final approval of that plan update. Troy and I will be co-presenting. And I'm just going to grab the mouse from John here. Thank you. The financial plan was prepared by city staff. I want to thank Scott Devlin, Sue Phalash, Julie McFadden, Jamie Oakland, and Troy Wu for their help in preparing this. This was recommended by the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Board to the City Council. And just a little bit of background, in 1998, Thurston County and the City of Lacey entered into a partnership to jointly acquire, plan, fund, develop, and maintain an athletic complex. In 2002, voters in the City of Lacey approved a bond issue for development of the RAC, as well as several other parks. Also in 2002, the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District, or PFD, was formed by the county and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater. One of the main purposes of the PFD was to develop the RAC. In 2004, Phase 1 of the RAC was completed. And then in 2009, Phase 2 was finished. And then in 2010, the Lacey City Council authorized an agreement for the transfer of Thurston County's share of the ownership of the RAC to the city, and there was a settlement. This settlement was completed in 2020. Regarding community need and some considerations, the need for this neighborhood slash community slash even regional park and its athletic fields was apparent before the RAC project came to be, and the need still exists today. As you know, the RAC has been heavily used since opening with tournaments, leagues, and special events. And it also is a free drop-in park, some portions of it, and a real gem in the community. There are many different age groups that use this facility, from children on the play equipment to teenagers using the basketball courts, et cetera, and also picnic shelters for family events and, and any kind of celebration. And then there's the ballplayers who come from all over the county and the region, and sometimes the world, to play in tournaments that won't rain out. The RAC is used by an estimated 200,000 athletic participants. That's the league and tournament play per year, and an estimated 1.2 million park and special event patrons per year. Local business owners, an important segment of our community, saw over $15 million in direct economic impact in 2022. And we're on track for that or higher in 2023. So although the success of the RAC cannot be questioned, it is not a self-supporting facility. To ensure the Regional Athletic Complex can provide the same level of service for the community now and into the future, a financial strategy has been developed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Troy. And Troy, just let me know when you need me to advance the slide.
Great. Thank you, Jen. This is really the illustration of what Jen just spoke to. This is a kind of a 10-year snapshot of the 20-year detailed plan you have in the, in the plan itself. You could see the green is our projected revenues, red is our, our expected expenditures. And then the blue line is the operating projected net income or loss, in this case, loss. And I will point out that the lot, these losses you see are cumulative in nature. So for example, in 2025, it assumes the 2024 loss had not been addressed. But of course, we do adopt, adopt balanced budgets, so that won't be the case. But in terms of the plan, we're showing a cumulative deficit. I won't go through the same detail that we went through at last week's work session. But, you know, you saw that this is a highly subsidized facility. We are using public facility district monies. We're using lodging tax, and we're using quite a bit of general fund reserves and operating support. In fact, in 2023, we're using about $540,000 of general fund monies. You know, I think that's really acknowledgement by this council that this is indeed a highly-used community park. It's an asset that goes beyond the tourism portion of this facility. So that's certainly in recognition of that. I think the themes in terms of, you know, kind of long-term for the RAC and things that we need to think about, the public facility district sales tax, if no action is taken, will expire in 2027. Staff is actively working towards getting that renewed. We need to work with our, our community partners in terms of Olympia, Tumwater, and as well as Thurston County. That is underway. There's quite a bit of planning that needs to go into that in terms of identifying a capital project that would be eligible for additional debt, which is one of the requirements for extending the tax. The other main issue is, is really looking to counsel in terms of the, you know, outline years, is that continuing commitment that this is a community park and therefore worthy of general fund support? So again, these are more long-term issues. If you do look at the chart on screen, the operating portion of the RAC will be solvent through 2031. So there is time, so there's plenty of time to look at that extension of the public facility district sales tax. So the good news is we are out in front of that, and we will work actively towards that. There is a, you know, we also talked about a reserve that we have in our public facility district taxes that can go to capital. I will make the comment that, you know, certainly we're not going to let this RAC fail. So I think we'd all agree that we would look towards, more towards operations of the RAC versus capital. But I think there is a balance there in terms of keeping this a competitive facility within area. So that's my comments on the actual financial portion of that. I will turn it back to Jen for concluding comments.
Thanks, Troy. So again, we're looking for approval tonight of the 20-year financial plan update with the included considerations and recommendations. It includes use of general fund and public facilities, sales tax, reserves through 2029, and to secure long-term general fund maintenance and operations funding. And like Troy said, recognizing the RAC serves as a critical and highly-used community park in addition to supporting Lacey businesses. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I just, a quick question before I take a motion. Is there a reason why we have to have this as a 20-year plan? Is, is there a law saying that we need to look at a 20-year plan? Because I look at, I look at this 20-year plan, and lots of work has gone into it, and I appreciate all the, all the work. But anything past 10 years is so far out of our realm of trying to have a realistic financial plan that it's almost laughable that we're trying to, trying to do it. I mean, can we make this a 10-year plan? And, and, I mean, it, it seems, there's a lot that's going to happen between now and 32. Is there going to be an extension? Was that, was that going to look like? What's the next phase of the RAC? Then, you know, how much can we get the rest of the region involved in LTAC funding of, of this? You know, there's so much out there that it makes a lot more sense for us to approve a 10-year financial plan instead of a 20-year financial plan, because we know this is not what the plan's going to look like after probably the next six years.
I wouldn't disagree, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we started looking at that 20-year period, just because the, if you look at the horizon of the public facility district, you know, that was more like on a 20-year horizon when we first started this. So you're right. Once you, in fact, I would say, you know, a five or six-year period is even hard to predict. So certainly, you know, the next time we do renew this, we could look at a, you know, a much shorter period, which would probably give us a little bit of better accuracy in terms of, you know, what we're going to see.
So, and as we know, when we, ever we look at these financial plans, you know, they can change by the next budget cycle, or they could change next month. And that's how quickly things change in our budgets. It just doesn't seem, I understand, we did it a 20-year before, and so maybe we want to look at 20-year now. But there's just so much that's going to change between now and the next six years, that it doesn't make sense for us to be approving a 20-year plan.
Can I piggyback off that?
Yeah.
All right.
Didn't mean to throw it.
No, no, you know, a lot can change, right? And ballot measure, like, you know, Metropolitan Park District, which only failed by 700 votes, was turned into a taxing issue, which this is a taxing issue too. It's, if that was the pass, you know, now our neighbors, they passed all theirs. So they're getting funding, but, you know, millions of dollars to their park system. And the bigger picture is, one thing that Lacey's great at is it supports tourism. And now we don't have, because that failed measure, we don't have the proper dollars to invest in that billion-dollar annual, you know...
And what you're saying is, obviously, if this comes back and that's passed, this whole plan gets thrown out the door as well.
Exactly, yeah. But I mean, that, that's why I wanted to bring to light that we need to look and revisit that, because it only failed by 700 votes. Meanwhile, our kids are still playing in the snow in the, in the middle of winter, yada, yada. We could be multiplying our, you know, in, how do you say it, compounding the effects of the RAC with those monies. And, and, you know, and turn something that costs us money into something that we're making money at, because it's, it's a billion, you know...
So what, do you have a recommendation here, Troy? I didn't mean to throw a toy monkey wrench into this whole thing, but it just, it does seem like a 20-year plan doesn't seem that...
Sure. I would, you know...
Sorry.
No, of course. You know, when we think about the potential next extension of the public facility district, it's going to be a 15-year extension. So... So, you know, I, I might make the argument that we do keep it a twenty-year just because we want to see what the impact of losing that next fifteen years. But, you know, I would certainly defer to, to the council on what timeframe that you would like to see. But, you know, I think this really is a long-term plan. When you're talking about a fifteen-year sunset on the sales tax, we probably want to know what's going to happen at the end of that period.
I, I think it's inevitable we're gonna have to justify it. I think that's happening. But i- in the same token, it's still good to have a goal. It's still good to have some kind of an outlook, thirty-thousand-foot view, just so that we can plan accordingly and just make little adjustments as we go. So.
Well, is there a motion?
I would just say, real quick, you know, we have comprehensive plan that's six years. You know, that's, that's our, our bread and butter right there. That's pretty much the, the nuts and bolts of the city, and, and I would like to see it more along those lines.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Lacey's Regional Athletic Complex twenty-year financial plan for the years two thousand twenty-four through two thousand forty-three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? I'm sorry to throw a whole monkey wrench in there. It's just, this is one of the things that kind of, you know, we're looking at so far out in the future, we know it's gonna change, and yet we're still passing it. Anyway, it's just, maybe it's a pet peeve of mine, and I'll just have to.
I would prefer to have a longing, a longer planning horizon, you know, because we can make small adjustments now potentially to.
We just know that this is not what it's gonna look like in probably
True.
five years, but.
But if we wait until
Sure.
five years from when we're gonna owe seven hundred thousand dollars, it's harder to find it.
I, I thought I was gonna be the one to bring up the Metropolitan Parks District. But I, I, I think that, you know, with, with the recent annexations that we've had, our, our parks growing and our brand-new five hundred and forty-four-acre park potentially coming online next year, well, at least a phase of it, and, and future phases in future years. We are gonna be revisiting the Parks District, and, and hopefully it will pass, and we won't even, you know, really have to look at, look at this and consider this. But until that time, we've got to put something in place.
Is there any other discussion? Then there's a motion and a second to approve the Lacey Regional Athletic Complex twenty-year financial plan for the years two thousand twenty-four through two thousand forty-three. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Our final item, item tonight on the city manager's report is the two thousand twenty-two Transportation Benefit District Annual Report, and we'll go to Ashley Smith, our Design and Construction Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Honorable Counselor members. As council is aware, in two thousand seventeen, voters approved a two percent, excuse me, point-two-percent sales tax increase to fund the city's transportation benefit district. And the LMC requires the district to report annually the status of revenues, expenditures, and upcoming construction schedules. So tonight, I'm gonna go through completed projects effective through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, last year's report, as well as any upcoming construction that's gonna be utilizing that fund, excuse me, utilizing that funding. Okay, so through December thirty-first of last year, the total revenues into the Transportation Benefit District Fund were approximately three-point-seven million dollars. Total expenditures through that year were three-point-seven-seven million dollars, leaving a, a net deficiency or a, a net additive to the fund for that year. The remaining balance as of that effective date was five-point-eight million dollars going into two thousand twenty-three. So summarizing all the completed projects utilizing that TBD funding from its inception up to last year, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two projects included overlays, reconstructions, and sidewalk projects. The roadway projects included nine-point-three-five lane miles of improvements or approximately eleven thousand seven hundred tons of asphalt, as well as approximately two thousand square yards of sidewalk improvements at a cost of three-point-seven-seven million. The map shown here summarizes the historical projects that were completed with TBD funding, representing the city's efforts to be equitable, both in the types of improvements completed, as well as the areas across the city. The city's pavement condition index for our roadway systems have remained fairly consistent at approximately eighty-three, which is well above the regional averages for other cities. Our pavement rating program ran a couple scenarios to fund this transportation benefit district, including an unfunded scenario, which would decrease the PCI over ten years to sixty-five. Assuming a revenue of two million dollars annually would drop the PCI down to seventy-two, using that amount every year for improvements. And then to maintain the current PCI at approximately eighty-three over ten years would require seven million dollars a year, approximately. So some of the projects completed last year, starting with the two thousand twenty-two overlay, which was approximately two-point-eight million dollars in total, that included portions of Marvin Road Northeast, Campus Highlands, Galaxy Drive, and Quinault Drive, as well as a few other residential areas, such as the, the Arbers Neighborhood and some side streets. The Rainier Road Emergency Payment Repair Project was, was utilized TBD funds in the amount of about two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. That repair included about four hundred feet that was damaged due to a flooding event. Citywide, nineteen manholes and fifteen valves were repaired throughout the city at a cost of approximately one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Some of the two thousand twenty-one sidewalk repair improvements were completed in the year two thousand twenty-two, the cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, and that included a large section of the Avonlea Neighborhood, as well as Tenth Avenue and Alhadeff. The two thousand twenty-two sidewalk repair improvements, at the cost of three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, included Sixth Avenue, Parkside, Willis Crossing, and Rosewood Neighborhoods, as well as a portion of Sleder Kinney. And that has actually carried over into two thousand twenty-three, so some of those funds will be used in this year's report. So in total, approximately three-point-eight million dollars were spent in two thousand twenty-two, eleven thousand seven hundred twenty-five tons of HMA, three miles of striping, sixty-nine hundred raised pavement markers, fifteen failed valve and failed manhole patches citywide, and approximately three thousand square yards of new sidewalk. Upcoming projects for two thousand twenty-three included the two thousand twenty-three overlay, two thousand twenty-two Carpenter Road improvements, which ran over into this year, Mullen Road sewer improvements, and the overlay utilities improvement project. So the two thousand twenty-three overlay is actually in progress now, beginning with Rainier Road leaving off from the emergency repair limits and including Sixty-S sixth Avenue. And then upcoming later this year will be the Emerald Hills and Thornberry Meadows Neighborhood, as well as Carpenter, Carpenter Hills Loop and Thirty-Fourth Avenue up in Hawks Prairie. And that's at a cost of approximately three-point-one million dollars. The two thousand twenty-two Carpenter, Carpenter Road Overlay Utilities Project is nearing completion. Payment is fully complete, with the exception of final striping and channelization, and that project was approximately three-point-one million dollars. Eight hundred thousand of that was funded through the Transportation Benefit District, with the remainder by the utilities. The two thousand twenty-two overlay utility improvements included Seventh Avenue, Fourteenth Avenue Southeast, and Franz Street at a cost of two-point-six million dollars. And again, only one-point-seven of, million of that was funded through the TBD, with the remainder through the utilities. Mullen Road Sewer Improvements was completed at a cost of one-point-three million dollars, and five hundred and fifty thousand of that was funded through the TBD. Upcoming through next year and beyond, the Britton Gateway Roundabout Project is scheduled for advertisement. The Pacific and Holman Roundabout, Eighth Avenue Southeast, a large portion of Willamette Drive Northeast, Thirtieth Avenue Northeast, Yelm Highway Southeast, excluding what was included in the Supertee a few years back, Compton Boulevard Southeast, Classic Heights, Clearbrook, and Holman, and Wellington Stikes areas. And I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions?
It's a lot of paving.
One quick question, but it was more direct, uh, for Troy than. So with, with real estate being, being so far down, are REIT dollars that we would normally receive, are they also down?
Well, this is different.
They are, yeah. This sofa REIT, we're, I would say by end of year, we're gonna be right around that two-point-two-five to two-point-five, which is down significantly from recent years. But yeah, definitely has a direct result of what is happening in terms of volume and real estate transactions.
Yeah, I was looking at earlier today how many houses were available for sale in the county. It's just over six hundred, which for us is like a third of what we would normally see, so just to.
So for, for the Transportation Benefit District, back when we, as you pointed out, back when we proposed this, we said that we were gonna need to spend about seven million a year to keep our payment index around eighty-three. It looks like we've been spending right around three million a year, and we're keeping our payment index around eighty-three. Is that, is that correct? So what changed?
It's a complicated question with a complicated answer. It is dependent on a number of factors. Some are the, the types of improvements that were completed have a, a heavier weight on the score than others, such as, you know, residential areas don't impact the score as greatly as some of the other larger projects might. And that is primarily what's upcoming for replacement in the, the, the plan for state of the streets. So we'll be reporting on that later this year, but most of the projects upcoming are either utility projects or residential areas that are starting to fail.
Any other questions?
You could have just said staff is awesome.
It wasn't that long ago when it first got on council, we were looking at a one-million-dollar, you know.
Deficit, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause we stopped funding the overlay program. So, you know, thank the voters for trusting in us, being responsible with the monies to, you know, make their quality lives, you know, driving to and work, you know, to and from work, to the grocery store, taking your kids to school and all that, a little bit safer. Where would we be without this? Have no idea. Wouldn't be quite as, you know, sunny skies or whatever. But I, I did want to shine, shine light on, even if we had half of this revenue with the Parks District, you know, we'd have two million dollars annually to spend on our parks, you know, to spend the quality of life that, you know, quality of time with our loved ones when we're not spending it at work and doing all that, so.
Oh, thank you. I guess there's no other questions about Transportation Benefit District. Thank you for the great work you're doing on this. Appreciate it. Anything else?
No further report, thank you.
Then let's go on to standing, or boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first. The, the Mayor's Forum did meet last Friday. We actually went out to Yelm, and as an update, we've invited the, the Port Commission and the County Commission to go every other meeting. And so the, the Port Commission was there, and it's been nice to get an update from, because there's so much been happening at the, the port. It was really nice to get an update about the port. The, a couple of things that we, I, I brought up, it's usually the Mayor's Forums is time to sort of, you know, talk to the other mayors, or, you know, the Chair of County Commission, or the Chair of the Port, and just run things by them, say, hey, this is what's going on in our city, and we get to talk about, you know, you know, what's going on, and get, get some advice. And one of the things I, I had just brought up since we just talked the day before was our committees and, and how each city's been doing it. And all the cities there basically did have some sort of a committee structure, but it did seem like they're, they're using them quite a bit different than what we do here in the city of, city of Lacey. And Olympia is the closest to our model, which is what, what we talked about. But the committee, committees there, basically, if there's a unanimous decision, it goes right on the consent agenda, and so it doesn't get brought up again. That's the biggest change, and they only, they only had that three committees. But there, everyone was really interested in seeing how this is gonna play out in the city of Lacey if we go to a new committee structure, or get rid of committees altogether. And so it was interesting getting their feedback on that. It sounds like a lot of what the cities were, were doing is they use their committees sporadically. It's like they don't meet all the time, but they only meet to do a deeper dive on an issue that happens to be with that committee. So they, they're using their committees considerably different than meeting every single month, you know, month in and month out. So they're, they're all interested in seeing, you know, if we change, what that's gonna turn to. I did bring up that we're gonna look at moving our, our meeting times to Tuesdays. And so that was, they all always wondered why we're meeting on Thursdays anyway. Anyway, and so it, it, it was nice to get some of that positive feedback there, wanting to see how this is all gonna play out in the city of Lacey. The other thing we did talk about was the PFD, and I just talked a little bit with the, the Mayor of Olympia and, and just make sure that we're on the same page where it looks like, you know, if we're gonna extend this for fifteen years, it needs to be on the, the project that we currently have, and that was her agreement as well. So we're talking about the Children's Hands-on Museum and, and the RAC, and I did mention some, and, and the, and the, the amounts need to stay the same too, and I think she was, thought that as well. Of course, the county and, and Tomwater would be interested in receiving PFD funds. But I think we, we, we've had some conversations where it, this doesn't apply to new, new projects that don't have that already on them. So it was, it was nice to just sort of talk that through a little bit there at the, at the Mayor's Forum as well. And that is my report. Deputy Mayor?
Is that something where they, they, they say that, you know, with the committee structure they have, it's more of a streamlined situation?
Yeah, I, I just support the questions about our committee structure. I think they just use their committees differently than, than what we do. Or it did sound like, well, it sounds like you're repeating a lot of information, and I say, yeah, that's sort of happens under our current, current structure. And so I, I do think there's, there will always be times where we need to maybe do a deeper dive. And that, they said, well, what happens if a big issue comes up? And so, well, we'll have to figure how that all looks, you know, without the committees, if that's the way we're gonna go. But they're, they were kind of interested in seeing how it's all gonna play out here in, in Lacey.
I, I do have one quick report. LTAC, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, met on Wednesday, August ninth. Troy brought our finances to us, and it looks like we are in a very similar position as last year, and hopefully be able to fund as many projects as we did last year. There were a couple of policy and procedure items that, that, that came to the, to the, to the group, and, and one of those was launching the, the online application for LTAC, as it is right now. The paper application is something that we've had in place for as long as most of us can remember. And we are wanting to launch an online. I, I think the suggestion was that we, you know, do away with the paper and, and just go strictly online. The group kind of decided that we want to, you know, do at least one hybrid year and give everybody who is, you know, been, been using LTAC or applying for LTAC dollars at least one kind of hybrid year to, to, you know, adjust to going fully online with their application. So we'll be revisiting that one in January in more of an off-season where we're not, you know, trying to make decisions, funding decisions. So that, and also a scoring rubric that we are looking to use. A lot of cities use that, and it goes up to a hundred and thirty points, and each one of the categories that we have on the application is weighted. And so we, we kind of, we, as a group, we, we thought, you know, this is, this is actually a really good idea. One of the suggestions was if they score, you know, at a certain level, then maybe they don't have to come in for an interview. That, that did not pass in that the, the committee would like to reserve the right to interview anybody that they feel they need more information from on their project. So we, while we may be going to a scoring rubric, we may or may not, you know, use those, those numbers as a reason to interview or not interview that, that, that group. use those numbers as a reason to interview or not interview that group who's asking for funding. Other than that, we kind of outlined our future meetings. As you guys know, LTAC is something that runs from usually around July or June through September into October. And that is the duration of that committee. So it's a lot of hard and intense fast work so that we can fund the projects that you guys get to go to in the city. And so we'd like to do some more of these things, a little more off-season than during season so that we're not trying to, you know, recalibrate, you know, the way we do things at the same time that we're trying to, you know, decide on who's getting funding. And that is my report.
So I have a quick question for, and it's something I've been talking to the other cities, through the mayor's forum actually, about LTAC. It's been my recommendation for a while and I've talked to staff about this is to have a joint meeting with the other cities and the county for LTAC. Because we're all funding similar things and yet we all have a different schedule. And, you know, for example, the reason why I think the rack gets missed out on LTAC funding from the other cities is because they don't hear about the rack. I mean, they only hear about anecdotally through, maybe through their hotels about how much it gets used. But since the LTAC committee never hears that information, that, you know, we don't line up these fundings like we should do regionally, especially when it comes to these limited funds. And so I'm really hoping that maybe during, as you're looking at your, at your schedule, to have a joint LTAC meeting so you guys can talk about what things you funded the year prior, what things are priorities, you know, going forward. And then see if we can get on the same page and have some, a easier path for some of this stuff. And so, because the other cities, like when they take up their funding, it's a completely different cycle than Lacey. And so that never makes any sense. We should all be doing it at a similar time, you know, and looking at the similar events, especially when it, on these regional events, have some coordination between the LTAC committees. So that's just my two cents there.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Councilmember Cox?
Okay. Report on the Lot Clean Water Alliance Board, which met on August 9th. We accepted a low bid in the amount of $910,755.30 from Consolidated Electrical Distributors of Lacey to replace components in the substation A and B. This substation was installed in 1982 and it provides power to critical processes, including headworks, influent pumping and the Bud Inlet reclaimed water plant. So the company will be replacing transformers and associated switches and upsizing equipment to accommodate necessary future expansion. This is a little bit of a tricky one because the delivery lead time for this highly specialized unit substation equipment is 140 weeks. So the equipment purchase is being bid in advance of the actual construction contract. This approach initiates manufacturing of the equipment early enough to remain on schedule for it to actually arrive and then be installed in mid-2026. So the things that you have to plan for. We also authorized up to $76,000 to amend a contract for migrating data to the latest version of SharePoint. The system currently in use at Lot is no longer supported by Microsoft. So there's a big conversion there going on. We received reports about the Bud Inlet reclaimed water plant, which was built in the early 2000s and began operating in 2005. During a maintenance shutdown this year to replace some aging valves, it was discovered that there was some severe piping corrosion. And so that led to a little bit more investigation about what's going on there. And after inspection, it was concluded that there was, this was likely caused by chlorine over the past 20 years of operations. So they have replaced the most corroded pipe and coated the less corroded pipe in hopes of resolving that problem. And finally, we heard a report from Matt Cannelly, the executive director, about renewable resources produced as part of Lot's treatment processes as well as an industry perspective on wastewater resource recovery. As part of Lot's commitment to environmental stewardship, they capture and reuse renewable resources from the wastewater treatment process, thus reducing its carbon footprint. We work on reclaimed water and Class B biosolids and biogas. They use the biogas, for example, to heat a building. And so what would have just been offshot into the air actually has a function and helps with that. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Dedman?
Thank you, Mayor. Community Action Council met on July 26th. We welcomed Megan Sullivan from Together and Dr. Sarah Lloyd. They're both representing the low-income sector. It's kind of a quiet month, but other than that, the Bylaws Committee held an election and I was elected chair. So they all ganged up on me or whatever you want to call it. But yeah, it's relatively just a quiet month. They meet on the 27th of September. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kunkel?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two reports, one from Jazzcom. Jazzcom met on August 7th. The heart of our agenda was to reflect on the Jazz programs and services and a review of a portion of our municipal code relating to impoundment and redemption. Did you know that Jazz has 187 volunteers that help with the day-to-day activities such as laundry, cleaning kennels, assisting with matchmaking for adoptions? Year-to-date, these volunteers have provided over 3,500 hours of their time. We also have a foster program which helps reduce the number of animals in the shelter, thereby increasing the potential capacity for the shelter when needed. We also do advocacy, both through local and state legislation, and helped encourage the passing of House Bill 1424 concerning consumer protection with respect to the sale and adoption of cats and dogs and HB 1234 concerning the civil forfeiture of animals seized for abuse and neglect. Jazz works with nonprofits to provide low-income spay and neuter vouchers, which is about 900 vouchers per year. We have a reunification program using online sources to reunite lost pets with their owners. There's a community cat program which has received $18,000 in grant funding to trap, spay, neuter and vaccinate and return free-roaming cats to the area where they inhabit and has saved 56 cats from being euthanized. We have the emergency housing program for animals whose owners are in crisis, owner surrenders and reforming services, and the Roof Over Rover program that provides donated dog houses to low-income households. So there is a great deal of community service and work that comes out of a very worn-out and unsatisfactory working environment with our Jazz. I think our community owes a debt of gratitude for what they do and I certainly do myself. Regarding the municipal code review, there were updates needed to the language to better reflect modern-day standards of practice relating to LMC 7.04.060, impoundment and redemption. And I'm assuming the council will probably see that revised version soon. And on a personal note, the Roof Over Rover program was appealing to me. I was thinking of taking on a winter project of building some great little homes for Rover. And if any of my colleagues would like to contribute to the effort, please let me know. And I will be in the habit of always recommending to my colleagues and the community at large to consider adopting a pet. That is Jazzcom. And I also have one for the VCB. VCB met on Tuesday. We welcomed three new board members. I apologize in advance if I butcher these names, Jeetu Shadri, Brandon Staff and Michael Davidson. We covered a review and repurposed recommended budget revisions for 2023 and approved our budget for 2024. For our destination master plan that we've been talking about, we do have a new contractor awarded that was announced today, CSL International is being awarded the Quest Grant plus some reserve funds to start putting a plan in action. For our scorecard on tourism metrics, our occupancy rates are similar to last year. Annual goal is at about 68% and we're sitting at 67% year-to-date. For marketing, we have 160,000 unique web visits with an annual goal of 335,000. Our social media audience is sitting at about 26,000. Our goal is 28,000. PR impressions with key articles and blogs is showing at over 9 million impressions. To summarize, our marketing efforts are performing above 2022. And I also wanted to add, there was a concern expressed in the last LTAC meeting. We are able to actually measure the effectiveness of our advertising budget. We can identify local tourism behaviors and successes based upon specific advertising investment. So that is a thing. We can come and talk to LTAC if that would help. We had a, also had a couple of great sports events in July to include the USSA Cascades National Fastpitch Championship and the Washington State Senior Games. That is my report.
We've seen Annette's presentations and they are awesome. And I think when they come and do that at work session, you know, the rest of LTAC isn't present and they don't really get a full understanding of how much the impact truly is. But I have shared some with them since that meeting.
Thank you. And our last report out, Councilmember Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two reports. InterCity Transit met last night and one of the big things to call out is that they are the 2023 grand champions from the Washington State Transit Association Rodeo, which is a competition where drivers and maintenance staff at InterCity Transit go and compete against others from across Washington State. And this is the seventh year in a row that we are the grand champions for the state. So we've got some pretty good drivers and some pretty good maintenance folks working for InterCity Transit. They also updated some of their route pages because they're trying to make those more user-friendly. So check it out before you ride the bus. My more substantial report is the Board of Health met last Tuesday. And I wanted to share some data on a couple of different topics. I'll try to be brief. But they put forth a proclamation making August Breastfeeding Awareness Month. And the person who came and presented to us, Gretchen, read out some pretty incredible statistics. And I'll just pick maybe two. One is that babies who are breastfed have a 36% reduction in the risk of SIDS. And another is that heart disease is the leading cause of death in American women. And data from the Women's Health Initiative indicates that women who breastfeed for seven to 12 months after a first delivery were 28% less likely to develop cardiovascular disease. So it has tremendous benefits, not just for the infant, but also for the mother who's able to breastfeed. And there are a lot of reasons why breastfeeding is really hard. And so the Board of Health provides family nurse services to try to support women in our community who may be struggling or may not have support in other places so that they can facilitate that connection that benefits both of them. So I thought, I'll share the presentation that has all these stats. If you're interested, I'll send it out to the council. On a less, less positive note, we got an update on the number of drug deaths that has afflicted Thurston County since the beginning of the year. So from January 1st through July 31st, Thurston County saw 32 drug deaths and 25 of those are opioid-related. And those are preliminary numbers, so the real numbers are probably higher because some of them are still being investigated by the coroner. So I'm glad that Lacey today declared August 31st as Opioid Awareness Month because it's, it's real bad right now and the numbers keep going up. We also received an update from Joe Avalos from Olympic Health and Recovery Services, which is one of the partners that we here at Lacey work with, part of our mobile outreach team. They partner with OHRS to provide crisis response when people in our community need help. So we got an update on the Thurston Mason Crisis System and the 988 Lifeline Implementation. So the national suicide hotline. In the past, you had to memorize a phone number. Now you can just dial 988. It's easier for people to remember and so 988 has been officially implemented. It's a confidential, free 24/7 service that connects people in crisis, whether you're, you know, at risk of suicide or you're just in crisis, you're having a mental health challenge. You can call 988 and be connected with someone and it's in English and Spanish. And they just rolled out the Washington Native and Strong Lifeline. So if you call and you're a member of a tribe or you're native and you request to be connected to someone who is a tribal member, you will be able to connect to a tribal member or someone who's closely connected to that community. So there are a lot of excellent resources out there. And, you know, Joe talked to us about response times. They got almost 300, excuse me, 3,000 calls in January, 2,500 calls in February, 31,000, 3,100 calls in March, 2,600 calls in April. And the calls were answered, almost all of them within 30 seconds or less. The average speed of the answer was one second in three out of the four months. So people in our community need help. And when they're calling these numbers, when they're calling these resources, we're able to respond really quickly because of funding and staff and partnership. So folks should know that 988 is live. And I'll just say this from a personal note, we didn't talk about it in the presentation, but talking to someone that you think might be experiencing suicidal ideation or thinking about suicide does not make it more likely to happen. It actually can really help. It can save somebody's life. So if you feel like someone in your life might be in crisis, ask them about it. Talk to them and then refer them to resources.
Go ahead.
One more thing, Mayor. Dear friend of the community, Michael Jamison. He's been very involved in Veterans Affairs in this community. He's involved with the Lacey Chamber and he is currently in the hospital. Took a tumble and doctors are looking at him and he's been through surgery. Still waiting on a prognosis, but my best wishes and thoughts and prayers to his family and friends. He's a really, really sad time and, you know, he's a good guy. And so if you're in the mind to pray for him, I would sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with his family.
If I could piggyback on that, you know, Mike's a fellow Marine like me. He was on the board for Gold Star with Ed and myself. And, you know, everything he does, relationship-wise or anything in the community, puts his heart and soul in. And he loves his community. So, but on a more positive note, I would like to say, good job, Washington versus Maine in Little League World Series today. 10-run rule them. So hopefully they keep doing well. But I mean, it's, you know, good, clean, healthy competition is great, especially for our youth, you know, so.
Love the Little League World Series, so.
Congratulations.
Please let Michael's family know that I'm thinking about him and best wishes as well. He does so much for this community. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you all for being here tonight. And so without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey.